Get going here. Good evening. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer. This is the council meeting for February 15, 2016. I need a mover of the agenda. That's before you. Councilor Martin, seconded. As councillor Storebroom, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. With me this evening are my council colleagues, councillor Jack Arnold, councillor Paul Albrecht, councillor Rudy Storebroom, councillor Gail Martin, councillor Val Vandenberg.
Hello.
And with us at the staff tables Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, Carolyn Machada, Manager of Legislative Services, Frances Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer, Gerald Minchuck, Director of Development Services and Economic Development, Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment, Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services. And we also have Graham Flack in the audience, and he's the Deputy Director of Corporate Services. Next item we have, at the minutes of the last meeting, that they be adopted as circulated, councillor Albrecht, councillor Storebroom, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. So the first major item we have is under Community Spotlight. We have Peter LeBlanc and Charisse McGee from the B.C. Association of Farmers Market. And they're going to be coming up to the mic to give a bit of a presentation. Welcome.
Hi, thanks.
And one thing you have to have is the mic right up to you, or nobody will hear you.
Testing, testing. How's that?
Is it on?
Yep.
So, thanks very much for responding to our letter where we were talking about the Farmers Market Nutrition Coupon Program, which I'll explain a little bit about how it operates, and then talk to you about what's going on in Langley. Then I'll turn it over to Charisse, who's with the Langley Farmers Market, and also Penny, who's with one of our community partners. And they'll talk about more of the impact it has right here in Langley. So first off, the B.C. Association of Farmers Markets, which I'm on the staff there, we represent 125 member markets across the province. And our mission is to support, promote, and develop farmers' markets across British Columbia. And that represents about 3,000 vendors and farmers across the entire province. And our nutrition coupon program, when it was first conceived and continues to this day, to have a goal to increase access to local food for low-income pregnant women, families, and seniors, in order to improve both their health and then also to benefit the economic prosperities of British Columbia's agricultural community too, especially those that sell at farmers' markets. And where does the funding come from? On an annual basis for the last several years, the program's about $1 million. And it's funded by the Healthy Families B.C. under the Ministry of Health. And we operated in partnership with markets across the province and community partners, such as the ones we have here today. So a little bit about how the program works, this coupon program. First step is, low-income families and seniors enroll with a community partner. So that would be Penny. And the community partner gives the recipients coupons, who are to be able to shop at the market and also support their food literacy needs. And I'll show you a bit about that in a few minutes, too. And then the recipients are able to purchase eligible items at their local farmer's market. So each week, a participant will receive a booklet with $15 in coupons, five $3 coupons. And then there's 16 weeks when they're distributed. So a family will receive $240 to shop at the farmer's market each year. They're distributed over 16 weeks, but they have 21 weeks to redeem the coupons. Program period runs, last year it ran between about mid-June until the end of October. And we also have some instances where there are some larger families that get enrolled in the program. So up to the discretion of the community partners, they may receive additional booklets. So just some provincial statistics here. It's grown quite a bit over the last four years. And we're now receiving a stable amount of funding from the provincial government. So 2014 and 2015 are very similar. You'll see the numbers, though, on the bottom with coupon funds has gone up. And that's in large part because we get some great co-funders. That can be communities, other partners, corporate sponsors, who are supplementing and helping deal with the waiting list that are in the communities. Because even though we have a generous amount to work with, it certainly can't meet all the needs of low-income families who find it difficult to purchase healthy food each week in their community. The number that we're touching here ends up being quite a few. There's the children, seniors, pregnant women. We've been collecting those statistics in large part thanks to our partners who help us with that data. So that about 8,194 people last year were able to benefit from the program across the province. Then the other thing that we're quite thrilled with, and it's always a great surprise, is that when we give out $240 worth of coupons in $3 chunks, 93% of it ends up back in the market. So the people who are being selected by the partners are getting to the market. It's important to them. They're being supported. And the market, even though it may operate one day a week, for only a few hours, in a location that may some way find difficult, they get there. It's important. It's integral. Everybody's working hard to make it work well. Now, just some statistics on what we found as far as the impact on the participants and some of the reports they've given us. And I only parsed out for you here what's happened in Langley. And it's modeled very well to what happens across the province. It may be a bit difficult to see it. It says, "How many years have you been in the program?" It was, we had, "This is my first year, two years, or three years." As you can see, it's almost equally split. So there's some people who joined it this year, some who've been in for several years. "How often do you shop?" This was very unique to Langley. 29 people responded to this survey. There might have been, well Penny will tell you how many people were in the program in Langley, but 29 responded to our survey. Nearly all but one said they shopped every single week. Getting to the market, this was, again, looks what Langley looks like, is that the vast majority of them, that red section, 18 of them are driving. Then the next largest group was walking. Some rode with friends, and one took the public bus on a regular basis. And who do you come with? We find that not only is this improving people's health by giving them access to fruits and vegetables that they can get, they're also having some level of engagement. They're coming with a friend, they're coming with their family, other people have coupons, and some are coming by themselves. And then we also asked them, because we're trying to see the impact on B.C.'s farmers, farmers who come and sell at the farmer's market here in Langley. The participants, even though they are designated as lower income, are also spending their own money. And only two of them said they didn't spend any more money, but many of them spent between $1 to $5, $6 to $10, or more than $11. Now, this one is very fascinating. We asked them, because we want this to benefit them in some way in addition to food, how has this helped you learn about food, nutrition, and those aspects too in addition to it? So are you getting not only the food, but some support in an education model? And as you can see, most of those areas had 14, or 17, or 20 different responses for things like better reading food labels, cooking food and storing it safely. So this program, because of the fact that we work with a farmer's market where you're getting that information directly from the farmers and producers and the partners, they're getting quite a bit of support in addition to simply receiving some funds to go shop at the market. So now, that ends what I'd like to say. I'd just like to pass it over to Charisse and Penny, and they can tell you a little bit more about their connection to it here in Langley. And then we're happy to take some questions, should you have any.
Can you hear me good? My name's Charisse. This is my actually first year managing the market. I'm a little green, but definitely keen on really getting engaged with the community. I did have the privilege of working there last year and got to experience how the coupons worked alongside Penny. Every market day, we sat together and saw the wonderful people this program supports. A few numbers directly from the market itself. Our first coupon reimbursement last year was $99. And the final coupon reimbursement to the vendors was almost $1,800 from one market day of sales. So that means $1,800 is getting back into the vendor pocket directly from using this program. So the business, our businesses in our community are being supported by this program exponentially. And there's plenty of room for growth. And our goal, which will be unveiled at our next AGM, is to become much more involved with our community. So our strategic plan directly outlines how we will get involved, but I haven't seen it yet. It's been developed by the board. So there'll be more to follow on that. So this program gives us an opportunity to connect with lower-income families, the Senior Center, and other partnership programs that Penny knows about. And she can give you a little bit more details on the amount of families and other folks that are using this program. Penny.
I have the privilege, and it really is for me a privilege, to coordinate this program. Peter touched a little bit on this. It's actually got two significant parts from my point of view. Definitely the coupons. I have a waiting list every year at the end of the market season. I have people coming up saying, "How do I get on the list? How do I get on the list?" So. We currently, in the past two years, we've been involved now for three years. The first year, we started with 20 coupon books. And the second and third year, we have 40. I still don't have enough coupon books. We're working on getting some private funding for more coupon books, because the need is genuinely that great. The significant percentage of coupon recipients are seniors. Langley Seniors Resource Center, and you've got to have friends who I work for, partner to coordinate this program. So the first year, only seniors on low income got the coupon books. When we received the 40 coupon books, we were able to reach out to the Langley Community Services and provide some immigrant families. And believe me, that was amazing, amazing. We had two families in particular that stand out to me. One of them had 11 people living in a home, seniors, and a large percentage of young people under 18. You would have thought you'd given them gold. And the LCSS provided them with interpreters so that they could come to the market and know, find their way around. It was really quite lovely. Last year, we provided, I believe, eight single-parent families with coupon books. And honestly, my partner and I, we go to the market every week to distribute the coupons. We found that a way to truly engage people in community, which is the "you've got to have friends" mandate. It's about inclusion and belonging. So we go to the market every week and distribute, and it's such a social event. It's so wonderful to watch people arrive and greet people they've met before, and walk around the market, and "What did you buy?", and all that stuff. These single parents and their children would come usually after school. And they were so delighted, so delighted. Some of those, a couple of those single moms actually were attending Quatlin in the fall, and they would get their friends to bring the kids after class and be at the market. So it was a really amazing way for people to get a sense of community and a sense of camaraderie. So the market coupons are great, but from my perspective, they're an avenue to building community, which is, you know, my second priority in life. My first priority is food skills. I grew up real poor. I love food. And I love to cook. So the other piece of the coupon program is the food skills part, that recipients of the coupons are required to attend food skill classes. My partner Debbie and I facilitate those. So they have a hands-on experiential workshop that is based on what, mostly what they want to learn. And then we slide in some of the basic stuff, some of the actual skills, like canning and storing and things like that. And some of the single parents couldn't come to the actual class date, so we arranged for them to meet in one of their homes. And we did the food skills classes there for them. So we go out of our way to make it work. And it is so, really so exciting. Debbie and I can't wait for Wednesdays, you know. Okay, it's a Wednesday. And we can't wait for our food skill class, because at any given time, particularly during the market, from June through to October, we have between 18 and 25 people in that food skill class of all ages. And our seniors love it. They love having the mixed generations. That food skills class has been, from year one, so successful that it's run every month all year long. And it has been for three years. So I have to honestly say, that is the opportunity, the coupon program and being involved in it brought to our city.
Okay. Thank you. So councillor Martin?
Well, it sounds absolutely wonderful. Can I assume if somebody hands in a coupon to a vendor, then the vendor gets reimbursed from your funding partners, correct?
They return the coupons to the market, and then we process them and send them back to the Farmers Market.
Right.
And they reprocess it. They rework it.
So, okay, thank you. So you mentioned some groups, the Langley Community Services and the Langley Seniors Resource Center. Is that basically how people find out about it? Is it through the Social Services Office or something like that?
We don't advertise at all, because my waitlist is that long.
Okay.
Okay. It initiated with the Langley Seniors Center.
Okay.
And the rest of it is word of mouth.
Okay.
And it actually happens at the market. People will come up and say, "What's this coupon thing about?"
So there probably is some kind of a threshold that people have to meet to qualify for this?
Absolutely.
Like a low-income, I mean...
Yeah. We in Langley put a ceiling on under $30,000.
Under 30, okay.
Yeah. And they usually show proof of income. Sometimes you don't really need proof of income.
Yeah.
And that, but that's the ceiling. Actually, I've never asked Peter what theirs is.
Right.
And that. But generally, it falls far beneath that amount.
Now, the food skills program, you said it's mandatory.
Yeah. It's a requirement of receiving your coupons.
So if they don't attend, would they not be qualified again to receive coupons the following year, or how does that work?
Well, that's definitely weighed in.
Yeah.
We just simply have not experienced that problem.
And where are those classes held?
They're held at the Langley Senior Center in their...
In the kitchen?
Yeah. Well, not in their kitchen. They have a second kitchen.
Okay.
So we call it the sunroom.
Yeah. Sounds wonderful.
It is.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Further questions? Councillor Storebroom?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for that wonderful report. It's a terrific program, and I'll be happy to support it in a way I can't. I can't help but be curious, though, if there's any kind of special consideration offered to producers of organic products. Are there enhanced features, or is there any consideration for the future to promote the organic products that might be dealt with at the farmer's market?
Do you want to answer that question?
Well, the farmer's market determines who sells at the market, and they all are able to...
The mic.
So they all have equal consideration, as long as they have one of the qualified items.
Okay.
And so I do know that there are some organic producers at the farmer's markets, and because they, in the end, they are priced fairly competitively, I think they receive a fair share of the coupons there at the market. And a lot of the participants, this might be the first opportunity when they feel they can purchase organically, and so it's a joy for them to support that growing method, just being able to buy locally and for themselves to receive $15 each week in which they can be philanthropic and help support local farming. Sometimes that means a lot to them, too.
Uh huh. Thank you very much, and congratulations on your success. And thank you for your wonderful presentation again.
Councillor Vandenberg?
Thanks. My questions have actually already been answered, but I just want to make a statement that I think what you guys are doing is absolutely fantastic. The community definitely needs it, and you guys are going above and beyond. I think it's fantastic. Growing up, a farm girl myself, we lived off, you know, veggies in the garden. We did a lot of canning and stuff. And I think it's an integral part of a community. And again, I think it's fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening. And I know you're looking for a little bit of help from the city here. And normally, we allow 10 minutes. You've gone over double that. So I believe councillor Albrecht would like to assist you.
So I'll just make a quick little point here. It's just unfortunate that this is required.
It's just unfortunate that this is required in our community in these days and times. But, you know, it is fortunate that we have people like yourselves that are here to help out. So building community, educating is so critical. And the number of children that you put up on that slide was amazing, that there's that many going hungry. But anyways, what I'd like to do is propose a motion that the City Council write a letter to the Honorable Terry Lake, Minister of Health, asking for the continued support and funding for this program, which contributes to building healthier B.C. communities.
Seconded by councillor Martin. Is there any kind of a discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. So you're going to get a letter going on your behalf, I guess, to the minister. So again, thank you for your presentation, and hopefully my colleague's motion will be fruitful for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, mayor's report. The next regular council meeting is on March 7. That was televised. The regular one after that is March 21. Metro Vancouver, councillor Storebroom.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in keeping with the report that I gave council in the last meeting, you now have the Board in Brief Report verifying the information that I provided, in keeping with the community television programming comments, the external appointments. And so the next meeting for Metro will be later this month. We did meet with the Climate Action Committee meeting since our last council meeting, and a lot of that conversation had to do with the wood stove exchange program, and the programming as far as the year to come for the Climate Action Committee. And that is my report. Are there any questions? Please.
Councillor Vandenberg?
And with the wood burning, are they doing anything as an incentive for people with fireplaces in their actual homes to deter them using that? Or is that going to be part of the solution?
Thank you very much for your question, councillor Vandenberg. And yes, it is my understanding that they are looking to make those who are looking for an upgrade to their wood burning appliances to something more energy efficient. There would be some kind of a rebate associated with that. But it has not been specified to me if that would be in keeping with a fireplace, open fireplace. It would be suggested, however, that if you do have a fireplace, you might want to close that flue up in the wintertime, because you lose a lot of energy, and you could save yourself some money if you didn't let the hot air escape there. But the program is being developed, and it is being brought forward, because there are concerns about the smoke from wood burning stoves. And they want to make that more efficient and better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Storebroom?
Thank you.
That was, it'll be interesting to see what happens there. Next item we have is under Library Happenings, and we have councillor Martin.
Thank you. The City of Langley Library Happenings. The City of Langley Library, excuse me, with seven other Fraser Valley regional libraries, offer exam proctoring services to the community. In the past three months, library staff have proctored 20 exams, with another nine already booked in February. Fraser Valley Regional Libraries are proctoring locations for approximately 60 post-secondary institutions. Staff schedule a time for the student to write the exam in a suitable space. They receive the exam from the institution, confirm and track the time allotted for writing the exam, and process the completed exam according to the institution's instructions. By offering this service, the library provides support to the distant learners in our community. It doesn't say how to register for this, but I would imagine if anybody visiting our library could certainly do that. I just have a question. At the last meeting, I suggested a letter go to the library board in regards to the donation they made to the library commemory council hall. Has that happened? Do we know?
I know that the card has been purchased. I'm not sure if it's been sent.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But it is in process, if it hasn't already gone.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Councillor Arnold, you had something on advisory planning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we got together the other night, and we did not have an application on advisory planning. But we did get together as a committee and had a, well, an orientation session, I guess, because most of the people that are going to be on the APC this year are going to be new. We only have two holdovers from the previous year. And so we had an orientation and brought everybody up to speed as to what to expect and how to get things going. And it was a good session.
Thank you, councillor Arnold. Councillor Albrecht, you had something you wanted to say about parks?
Yeah. Again, very much like councillor Arnold, we had our startup meeting, slate orientation there, and then started to develop a list of goals for the coming year. And I have to say that it's pretty ambitious, and it's going to be a pretty exciting group. And hopefully, I can hold them back and do things in a realistic and financially prudent manner. But it's going to be fun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item I have is the Tims Community Centre grand opening. It will be held on February 24, which is not far away, nine days. The Tims Community Centre grand opening ceremony is almost here, and the City of Langley would like to extend an open invitation to residents, local families, community groups, local businesses, business partners, and visitors to explore and enjoy the grand opening of this new state-of-the-art facility. Festivities include live entertainment, refreshments, treats, free facility tours, demo classes, prizes, and more. The Tims Community Centre will open with extended hours, expanded programming, and a full range of exciting new amenities, including a gymnasium, running, walking track, weight room, spin room, games room, and multipurpose rooms. The grand opening, as I said, takes place on February 24 between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. And Langley City's fitness staff will also be on hand to provide training tips and guidance on how to use the equipment properly. And I did see the equipment most of council went through in the last couple of days, and maybe got a chance to see some of the equipment. It is state-of-the-art. It's quite something else. I believe you can plug in your iPad in the wall for your own sound system. The equipment has screens on there. It's incredible. I don't, it's all... I don't, it's all Greek to me, but this new equipment is something else. It's state-of-the-art. And I'm really excited to see what the staff have gotten for us. You know, it's, it's quite something. On a secondary note, tentatively, for that day on February 24th, the rotary easing wood clock will be unveiled. We're working on the time. This is a tentative date, not sure yet. It would be at 12:00 noon on that day in the plaza, and that would be at the corner of Glover and 204th, which is, most people would recognize the Innis Plaza, so it would be across from the Innis Plaza. So the next item under business here is bylaws. Bylaw 2980, that's the financial plan 2016 to 2020. The final reading of the bylaw cited as the financial plan 2016, 2020, bylaw 2016, number 2980. And I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Martin, councillor Stortebum. All those in favor? Against? Against? No, I wasn't. Councillor Vandenberg's against. And councillor Albrecht? Oh, yes. Councillor Albrecht.
I just, I just wanted to make a comment on the, on the financial bylaw and plan. Excuse me. I just wanted to acknowledge the staff worked really hard putting this thing together, and I also wanted to make sure that it was really clear that they, they had done, they've done yeoman's work obtaining funding from both the provincial and federal governments. And that's to serve our community. You know, we, we have to be mindful that the taxpayers' well is not endless, and that we have to make sure that we use these funds appropriately. I know that putting the resources into the Tims Community Center is, is a real key component. It's going to be a crown jewel for our community for a long, long time. So I just really wanted to make, make it clear that, you know, we're doing some tremendous work adding to our community, and it's, it's kind of a shame that we're not getting as much public feedback at some of our open houses as, as we should. And that, I guess, is my main point. We hear about doing more with less, and we have open houses, and I think we had two or three residents or taxpayers show up. So it's, I guess I'm just trying to generate a little more interest. It leaves us with wondering, are we doing a good job? Is they just don't care? Or is it just that they think that they can't make a difference? So it's just a challenge for us, I think. So that's all I wanted to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Albrecht. And to, for myself and on behalf of council, to Mr. Light and Mr. Flack and your, and your team that are out there, you're, again, doing a great job. And that's one more down, so you can breathe, breathe a little easier right now. And yeah, Graham might have to have a hot chocolate after this, right? So again, thank you to the staff. Next item I have is under Administrative Reports, and this is the 2016 community grants. I won't name them all, there's a long list of them. That city council endorsed the recommendations of the community grant committee to award community grants totaling one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents to the organizations listed in your document. And I would need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Martin, councillor Vandenberg? Is there a discussion at all? I'd just like to say that it's great to be able to help fund these organizations. Over the years, we've given out quite a bit of money. And it's, it, sometimes not all the big funds, it's the little ones that, you know, mean a lot to some of these organizations. You know, they go from a low as a hundred and thirteen dollars for one, one organization to a high of a few thousand. So again, to the staff, thank you for helping us work on this. And I'll call the question. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Next item we have is a UBCM motion on varied tax, taxation rate for residential class. Let council pass the following motions to be submitted to the Union of B.C. Municipalities for approval. Whereas the province of British Columbia through the B.C. Assessment Act prescribed classes of property registrations, B.C. Regulation 438-81 specifies that there is one assessment class for all types of residential, residential properties, and the community charter outlines that amusable bylaw to establish the property value taxes each year. Under section 197-3 specifies there is a single rate for each property class. And whereas the assessed value for multifamily strata units are remaining constant, and the single-family residential properties are increasing at an accelerated rate, causing a greater share of the property value taxes generated in the residential class to be borne by the single-family residential properties. Therefore, be it resolved that the province of British Columbia amend the B.C. Assessment Act and the community charter to allow the residential class to be split into two distinct residential classes, so that a different rate may be applied to each type of residential property to more equitably share the tax burden between the single-family residential properties and the multifamily residential strata properties. And I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Vandenberg? Councillor Albrecht? And is there some discussion? No, this is not unlike having the business and industrial group in classification, so we're looking for a, a further split. So councillor Vandenberg?
I just want to thank the staff for putting this together and for it after being mentioned at a staff meeting. I think it's very important, especially if we can get something going on this, to change things, to make it a little bit more better for residents and spread out the tax, tax costs. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do believe this came out of a council discussion we had, and councillor Vandenberg brought this to council's attention. So again, oh, councillor Stortebum?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you councillor Vandenberg for your comments as well. I see this is a very, fairly timely proposal being brought forward to the UBCM. I expect that there'll be much conversation about it at that level. Here in the City of Langley, of course, most of our residents live in multifamily residential, so this would impact our ability to set the tax rate for multifamily as opposed to single-family detached properties. Moving forward, though, I, I think this is going to be a hot button at UBCM, so I'll look forward to a lot of conversation at that level as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stortebum. So call the question. All those in favor? Against? Councillor Arnold is against. The next item we have is UBCM funding, or pardon me, UBCM motion on streamlining truck permits. The council passed the following motion to be submitted to the Union of B.C. Municipalities for approval. Whereas the province of British Columbia issues transport vehicle permits for overheight, weight, and width vehicles, which includes the requirement to obtain permits from local jurisdictions through which they will travel. And whereas the Minister of Transportation does not enforce the requirement to obtain local jurisdiction permits, and many of the haulers do not obtain permits from the local jurisdiction, meaning municipalities are not made aware of excessive weight, height, and width vehicles on their roads, and therefore cannot reasonably control such road use and cover costs for road maintenance associated with excessive loads. Therefore, be it resolved that the province of British Columbia review its regulation covering transport vehicle permits and make changes such that obtaining local jurisdiction vehicle permits is, is enforced. That the hauling companies must communicate and receive local jurisdiction approval to drive on local roads, and may further make changes to streamline permit issuance and fee collection to enable haulers one point of contact to obtain permits to travel through multiple jurisdictions. I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Albrecht? Councillor Vandenberg? Is there a discussion? Seeing none? This came through staff, and thank you to staff. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Under new and unfinished business, we have some correspondence from Bowen Island Municipality, and that's it? Is there anything else? Yeah? Motion to adjourn. Councillor Martin? Councillor Arnold? All those in favor? Good night. Thank you very much.